Yes, it is.
502.1E.
Referring back to the exhibit NWNA 20.3.1, I think you've already explained the respective lot size requirements. Is there any variance to those lot size requirements that is being requested as part of this application?
No.
Does the property have sufficient area that the existing residence on the property meets the residential unit density required under the ordinance in addition to land area needed for the density of the non-residential uses?
Yes, it does.
Map which has been marked as NWNA six- Excuse me, this is the site features plan. But I am going to ask you whether the site features plan- Yeah, okay, well, we can use this one. NWNA 8.2. I can ask you to point out to the board where the project is located on this map on the existing conditions and then we'll talk about what lies around it. Where's the project-
Sure. The project is-
And you're going to have to come to this side so the board can see.
The project is situated toward the left side of this sheet. Cunkletown Road is toward the top of the sheet where I'm pointing right now. And then Chestnut Ridge Drive is to the left side of the sheet. The bulk of the project is situated right here in the northwest corner where the existing garage is situated.
And if you can talk about what's the vegetation that lies to the north of that project area? Between that where the project is being proposed to be developed and the properties that lie north of Buckwaw Creek?
There is an existing gravel area where the trucks travel now. And just to the north side of that between the gravel area and Buckwaw Creek, that is a wooded area. Has low lying vegetation, undergrowth, as well as mature trees. That's along the entire border of the- where the project is going to be situated.
And to the south of the existing Gower Trucking Garage, what is the vegetation on the hill behind that trucking garage?
Again, that's a similar vegetation. There's undergrowth as well as mature trees. Some evergreen trees mixed in. And, you know, that's situated from basically behind the existing garage, you know, up the bank toward Chestnut Ridge Drive, all the way to Chestnut Ridge Drive. It's wooded and there's undergrowth in there as well.
And what is the approximate distance width of that buffer area to the south?
Oh, it ranges from 50 feet to at least a couple hundred feet.
And with respect to the area that's wooded to the north? How deep is that?
It's at least 50 feet to the creek of wooded area.
If you then could turn to the proposed site improvement plan, NWNA 8.5A.
Sheet SP-1.
Can you show us on this sheet where the landscape buffers are depicted? And what improvements to those buffers are being proposed?
Let's look at the south side first. You can see the shaded proposed driveway. To the south of that is a wooded area. There's a wood line with old squigley all the way across the whole boundary. You can see from that point or that line south, this whole area is wooded. I've also labeled a landscape buffer in there as well, which is a series of white pine trees. We're incorporating that into the buffer. There's a steep bank and at the top of that bank where the woods are is where we're going to plant additional trees for buffering purposes.
What are the proposed size of the trees when planted?
They will be six feet to eight feet in height at planting.
And after a three-year growth period, what is the anticipated height and spread of those trees?
These white pine trees should grow at least two foot per year. So it'll be another six feet. So they could be 12 to 15 feet in height after three years.
And so that would be an additional buffer to the buffers that you've already described as existing on the site?
Yes, there's adequate buffer there now, but this is an additional buffer that we're adding.
As part of the land development application process, do you intend to include a note on that plan requiring maintenance of that buffer?
Yes.
And that is because if you put a note on the- on that plan, it's a requirement of the land development plan and therefore stands in perpetuity since it's recorded?
Yes, this will be recorded, Doc.
We've been giving a lot of leeway on legal conclusions. I'm going to ask that testimony be limited to expert opinion. I'm going to ask that the testimony be limited to expert opinion and technical conclusions and not legal conclusions such as compliance with law, perpetuity, compliance with the ordinance, all of which I ask be straight.
I'll sustain that objection and obviously limit the testimony to what the applicant will be doing and what note, for example, will be on the plan.
So you've testified the applicant will put a note on the plan?
Yes.
Let's turn to the wetland buffer requirements. What buffer requirements did you consider from the zoning ordinance in marking the wetland buffer on these maps?
The ordinance requires a 50-foot inner buffer and a 25-foot outer buffer, a total of 75 feet from the perimeter of the delineated wetland. And those buffers are depicted on the plans.
If you could turn to the exhibit that's been marked and previously admitted as exhibit NWNA 8.4A, which is the exhibit sheet EX1, existing conditions. Okay. Could you please show us the locations of the wetlands as depicted on this plan sheet?
The wetlands, there's a large wetland basically right in the middle of the sheet. If you know where the existing garage is, if you head easterly a couple hundred foot, you see a hatching of wetlands. That is a delineated wetland. I have two other wetlands or water bodies marked as wetlands, which they actually are not wetlands. They're ponds, they're water bodies, but not wetlands. And those are located to the upper right of the sheet.
Just so that we're clear on this, who prepared the wetland delineation report for the site? EarthRes. And we'll have them testify separately about the background behind that report. But if you turn to the exhibit next to you, which is exhibit NWNA 6.8.2, which is the figure four from the EarthRes wetland delineation, which appears in volume two of the application. Can you point out where the two ponds are located that you just referred to?
Sure, they're located toward the upper middle of the sheet and they're labeled Pond A and Pond B.
And what's the nature of those ponds?
They are old settling ponds and there's standing water in them right now.
Do you intend to make a correction to your plan sheet, NWNA 8.4A, to coincide with the identification in the EarthRes report to mark the two ponds as being ponds rather than wetlands?
Yes, I will correct that.
So turning to the buffer area from the wetland that was identified by EarthRes and which is marked as the wetland on your map. If you could point out the wetland that is truly a wetland on both maps?
On NWNA 6.8.2, it's identified as wetland A, 0.96 acres. It's a cross hashing with a light blue perimeter. And on the site plan drawings, sheet number EX-1, it is labeled as wetlands, not wetland A, but just as wetlands.
And have you marked off the buffer on NWNA 8.4A?
Yes, you can see the 50-foot and 25-foot buffer, totally 75 feet.
Do the project plans call for any development activities within the wetland buffer areas of either wetland A- either of the wetlands or any of the wetlands delineated in the EarthRes report?
No.
How will the project avoid wetland buffer zone when it constructs the water line?
The water line will be horizontally drilled underneath it. So there'll be an open pit on each side of the wetland buffer, so you can horizontally drill the pipe under the wetland. So there'll be no disturbance in the wetland.
Would there be any disturbance in the wetland buffer area?
No, no.
And does the- does Nestle intend to obtain all necessary permits from the Department of Environmental Protection and Army Corps of Engineers for the directional horizontal drilling in the vicinity of that wetland?
Yes, they will.
Turning to the stream buffer requirements of the zoning ordinance, section 704.4. What buffer requirements does the zoning ordinance establish? And what did you consider in preparing your plans?
The ordinance requires a similar buffer as the wetlands. There's a 50-foot inner buffer and a 25-foot outer buffer for the streams, which in this case we have Buckwaw Creek. And those are identified on the plan as well.
I'm showing you a copy of the ordinance, which is NWNA 1, and on page VII-24. I'd like you to turn to the language of the ordinance and ask you, under section 704.4A, where is the buffer measured from?
The buffer is measured from the edge of stream, according to the ordinance.
And is there a buffer- a stream diagram that shows the edge of the stream and what's it's synonymous with?
Yeah, there's a diagram in the middle of the page that actually labels the top of bank where the buffer starts. It's labeled "top of bank."
And how does the zoning ordinance define the term "stream" for these purposes? If you turn to page, Roman numeral 3-43.
A stream by the ordinance, zoning ordinance, is a natural water course, sea water course.
And what features on this site qualify as streams, that is, natural water courses?
Buckwaw Creek would be classified as a natural water course. And there's also a unnamed tributary to the south of the project that would be considered a natural water course.
That unnamed tributary enters at some point a culvert under the existing truck area. Is that correct?
That's correct, there's a 48-inch culvert.
Does that culvert qualify as a natural water course?
No, there's no defined bed and- or bed and banks on a culvert.
And is it natural?
It's not natural.
Does the zoning ordinance include any exceptions to the stream buffer requirements for certain activities?
Yes, it does.
And among those, are there any exceptions for stormwater conveyance facilities or the like?
Yeah, stormwater facilities can be placed in the outer buffer, the outer 25-foot buffer of the stream buffer. That is permitted by the ordinance.
And if we turn to page VII-24-25 of the ordinance. Does the zoning ordinance include any exceptions for encroachments or instructions approved by the Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes, in the outer buffer, encroachments and instructions as defined and approved by DEP, stormwater conveyance facilities required by the township and unpaved trails shall be permitted.
Other than the activities that are authorized under those exceptions, do the site plans call for any disturbance associated with project activities within 75 feet at Buckwaw Creek?
No, just the outlet pipe from the stormwater facility.
Are there any plantings that would occur in the stream buffer area?
We have some evergreen plantings proposed in the outer 25-foot buffer area.
And is there any parking areas in the- currently in that buffer area?
There's existing parking from Gower's facility that's in that buffer area now.
I'm showing you page VII-25, section 704.4B-5, and ask you to please read it, read B and then B5.
B is a definition of the outer buffer. It's measured perpendicularly to and horizontally from the edge of the inner buffer for a distance of 75 feet. Number B5, no other earth disturbance, grading, filling, building structures, new construction or development shall be permitted except as permitted by the township floodplain ordinance.
And would the planting of the pine trees and the maintenance of the existing employee parking be consistent with the floodplain management ordinance, as you understand it?
Yes, I believe so.
Let's turn to the water body buffer in section 704.3 of the ordinance. What are the buffer requirements with respect to water bodies?
I believe that is a 50-foot and 20-
That would be 704.3.
Yeah, buffer of 50 feet in width, measured perpendicularly horizontally from the edge of the water body shall be maintained. So there is no separate 25-foot outer buffer on that.
And do the project plans provide for that buffer?
Yes.
And there- that would be from the pond areas, is that right?
Yes.
Are there any activities within the 50-foot buffer area?
No, that's-
In those water bodies?
There's no part of the project near those ponds.
Section 706.2 provides a property line buffer. What are those requirements?
There's a 75-foot property line buffer requirement.
And how was the project designed to comply with that requirement?
We've maintained that 75-foot buffer around the entire perimeter of the project, except for where the existing entrance is. Obviously, the entrance can't- it's already there, so it's within the 75-foot buffer now.
Is either the trucking facility or the single-family home currently located on the property in any of the wetland, stream, water body, or property line buffer zones?
No.
I'd like to turn to the firefighting provisions of section 701.20 of the ordinance. And if I could ask you to first, where in the application do you address compliance with the firefighting requirements? Is that in the narrative of the application?
Yes, I believe it is.
And I'm going to show you a copy of the narrative. Section 5.2, or exhibit 5.2 of the- in the application. And ask you to turn to page 22. What is the proposal for providing firefighting service at this property?
There is an existing dry hydrant located at the northwest corner of the bridge on Chestnut Ridge Drive over Buckwaw Creek.
And by dry hydrant, what do you mean? How does it work?
There is a hydrant that's sitting near the edge of the road. There's a pipe that's connected from the hydrant down into the stream. So it's submerged at all times. And then the- it's a place for the fire company to hook their truck up to and pump water out into a tanker truck. Or they can run a line, if there's a fire close by, they can just run a line from a stationary fire truck at that location to the fire. But it is a place for the fire truck to hook up.
Is this the type of facility that's referred to as a static water source under the ordinance in section 701.20B? I'm showing you the ordinance.
Yes, it is.
And did you design- well, excuse me. Did you review the requirements of that ordinance in terms of reviewing the dry hydrant system proposed to be used?
I did. There's, you know, requirement for the hydrant to be within 2,000 feet of the project, which it is. It is, it's, I think we're probably 600 or 700 feet from that hydrant. There's also specific flow requirements that are required as well.
And did you conduct an analysis of the flow requirements and the ability of the current dry hydrant to meet it?
I did.
And what was the conclusion of your analysis?
The conclusion is that that dry hydrant is adequate to meet the requirements of the ordinance. It has capacity to provide 5,000 gallons per minute.
And with how- over how long a period can it sustain such a supply?
A long time. There's a lot of water in that creek. It's a- there's a requirement here to sustain it for two hours. And there will be no problem with sustaining that flow for two hours.
In your opinion, as an engineer, does the dry hydrant system as designed provide an adequate and reliable source of water in the event of a fire?
Sure.
With respect to fire lanes, where do the plans provide fire lanes for the fire company to access the project site?
A fire truck can utilize the loop driveway as we have it laid out on our plan. You know, we've made sure that the water tanker trucks can make all those turning movements and the fire truck will be able to make those movements as well. They can follow the paved road or they can follow the way the trucks that will operate on Gower's property will run. There's a separate gravel driveway around the perimeter. So there's a couple of options there for the fire truck to make that loop and have good access to the property.
And will signage be included for no parking and for maintenance of those fire lanes?
Sure.
In response to Hanover's second set of comments, NWNA 33.2, comment number seven on page three, will Nestle contact the fire company to confirm that the driveway meets their accessibility requirements?
They will.
I'd like to turn to the stormwater management issues in the Hanover letters and specifically turn to exhibit 5.14A revised, which is your sheet ESC1.
Sorry, what exhibit is this?
This is exhibit 5.14A-Rev. In reference to the Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan, Hanover Engineering in exhibit NWNA 33.2, page five. And its comment number one refers to infiltration trench and fabric- filter fabric around the infiltration trench. Can you show us the location of that infiltration trench on the plan sheet? On the plan sheet, can you show us the infiltration trench?
The infiltration trench is the dark, heavy dashed area shown on the plan in the middle of the sheet. And it is labeled subsurface detention and infiltration system.
And does sheet DT2, which is exhibit NWNA 8.11A, does it show the detail of that?
Yeah, I know it's on that sheet. It does clearly show the geotextile around that infiltration bed on sheet DT2. If you look at this detail, you can see the geotextile specified on the right side of the sheet.
Okay, comment two of the Hanover letter suggests in its comment that contours and spot elevations be added to the plans to demonstrate how pavement will be graded to direct water to the proposed inlets. How will you provide those contours and spot elevations in your plans?
Well, the contours are already on the plan. Typically, when we develop a plan for a construction, we'll add additional spot elevations for construction purposes, but we can provide those, you know, now or later.
Comment number three of that letter refers to a temporary sediment trap. Can you show us the location of temporary sediment trap on the sheet, which is ESC1, which has been labeled NWNA 5.14A-Rev?
Sure, if you look at the left side of the sheet, there's a kind of an oval area that's labeled temporary sediment trap. It's clearly depicted on the sheet.
At what stage of the project is that sediment trap designed to serve?
It is just during construction and until the site's stabilized.
So if you refer to NWNA 5.15-A-Rev, which is sheet, the post-construction stormwater management one. Does the sediment trap show on that sheet?
No, that is- No, that is the Post-Construction Stormwater Plan. That is post-construction as it's titled, so the sediment trap is a temporary item, so it's not depicted on that.
So in answer to Hanover's comment sheet, that sheet PCSN1 is only post-developing conditions, doesn't include the sediment trap for that reason?
Right. That sediment trap will be removed and the grade brought back to its current condition or elevation, and that's depicted on the post-construction plan.
The Hanover Engineering comment also suggested that the head wall leading to Buckwa Creek be extended all the way to the creek. What is your view as an engineer of the stormwater system as to the advisability of that suggestion?
I would recommend we leave the head wall where it is. It's very close to the autumn of the creek now, but it gives you room for, to construct a head wall and put some, like a rock apron at the discharge side of the pipe, so that you don't have rock into the creek. You know, I would propose to leave it where it is.
And what is the purpose of a rock apron of the type you suggest be placed?
It serves twofold. It's an energy dissipator for the water to slow, slow it down, and also because it slows it down, it minimizes erosion. Conservation district will always require that at the discharge side of a pipe.
Mr. Davis, I'm going to give you a separate copy of Exhibit NWNA 5.5. It's already been marked as part of the application, just so you can hold it in your hand and not have to hold the entire volume. I'd like you to have that in your hands. This document is the environmental impact statement that was included in Volume 1 of the application. What role did you have in preparing that document?
My role was primarily civil engineering aspects of the project, soils, stormwater, anything site design related, stormwater as well.
Stepping back from this particular project, how many other projects of this type have you worked on and over what period of time?
I've been doing, well, I've been an engineer for 30 years now, and I've done a lot of projects this size and larger. Several of them have had environmental impact statements, probably half dozen of them over the years.
With respect to the projects involving water extraction and tanker loading operations similar to what's being proposed here in Eldred Township, about how many projects have you worked on of that type?
Probably, probably six or so of them.
And after you were involved in, were you involved in their original permitting?
Yes. At the other sites, yes.
Have you ever, have you gone back and seen those sites and operations?
Yes, I frequent those sites. Been there a lot of times over the years.
Okay. At those other sites, and you said going back 15 or so years, have there been any environmental impact complaints that you're aware of?
Yes. I'm not sure what other sites and whether or not there's problems at other sites in this particular application.
Well, I believe that the basis of his observations and experience at other locations goes to some of the comments that he's made as to the nature of the impacts of this site. If he's actually witnessed similar operations at other locations, he's capable of advising what the impacts are.
If we're going to start going through the details of a bunch of other projects, we're going to be here for very, very long.
I'll allow, but obviously the weight of the evidence is somewhat questionable because we're not going to bring in the projects, we're not going to introduce evidence of the other projects, but I'll allow it for the weight.
I wanted to clarify that I've been working on Nestle projects like this one for about 15 years, with them at probably six other sites in Pennsylvania. And just to clarify that, I haven't been working on Nestle sites for 30 years, I've been working on them for about 15 years.
Okay. And can you name the sites that you've worked on?
Sure. They are, one called Sassoonin Spring in Chester County, and the Pine Grove Spring in Schuylkill County, down near Pine Grove. There's a spring called Green Waltz Spring near Bangor, that's in Northampton County. There's a spring called Valley View Spring, also in Schuylkill County, out near Higgins, Pennsylvania. There's a, also a small one up in, near Stroudsburg called Quiet Valley Spring.
Was Nestle required to submit an environmental impact statement with its initial application? For what project? For this project. No, no. There was not a requirement to submit an environmental impact statement for this project. And was a specific request made by the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commissioner, the Zoning Hearing Board to prepare such an application?
No, they're not asking.
Such an environmental impact statement?
No, the, none of those bodies have asked us to prepare an environmental impact statement, nor has this board asked us to prepare it.
Why did you do it? Why did you prepare it?
It's referenced in the ordinance as an item that the zoning hearing board may ask for, so we chose at the time to be proactive and put environmental impact statement together.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a few questions about discrete sections of the EIS, which correspond to the requirements in Section 703.2 of the zoning ordinance. The first is on, on page five of the statement, there's a description of soil types. Did you prepare that section?
Yes, I did.
What types of soils are present at the site?
There's several soils, and they're listed on the plans, and they're better identified in a soil investigation that we did with earth engineering for the stormwater system. But they're all listed on the Erosion Sediment Control Plan, each type that's in the project area.
What characteristics do these soils generally have in terms of permeability and rate of percolation?
Where we tested, the soils were, were pretty good for infiltration. You know, we tested in various locations in the vicinity of the subsurface infiltration system and detention system, so, you know, some of the soils were sandy in nature, and some of them had some more silt in it, but they all had pretty good infiltration rates.
Where can more information regarding the soils be found in the application?
There's a appendix in the report that Earth Engineering did, and I believe it's Appendix C. Yes, Appendix C.
And was information also provided in the Appendix B about the soils?
Yes.
Turning to surface waters. What is the nearest surface water to the project on the site?
Well, we have the Watlin, I believe the Watlin would be the closest. Buckwa Creek is also close, but I think the Watlin would be the closest to the project, but they're pretty close.
Both of them are identified, though, on the plans, is that correct?
Sure. Buckwa Creek and the Watlins are clearly identified.
What's the nearest headwater stream to the project?
The, there's an unnamed tributary to the south of the project. It's, leads into the culvert, that 48-inch culvert that we spoke about earlier, and goes, leads into the Watlins, identified as Watlin B on NWNA 6.8.2. There's an unnamed tributary that feeds down toward that Watlin, and the headwaters are unnamed tributary. There's a distance, I forget how many lineal foot it is to the south, but it's, it's south of the project where the headwater originates.
Are there additional surface waters features on the site?
There's two ponds. Those are additional surface waters. They're identified as Pond A and Pond B, and Watlin B is another surface water.
What are the sources and destination of stormwater runoff from the site?
The, for the project itself, the stormwater originates from the south and flows in a north, a northwesterly direction over land toward the project area. That's the source of runoff for the project area that's being developed.
Does the environmental impact statement contain a summary of the stormwater management calculations that were, you previously testified to?
Yes, it does.
Turning to page seven of Exhibit 5.5, can you point to the board, the summary of the conclusions with respect to the management of stormwater from the site as a result of the project designs, particularly Table 3 on page 7?
Yeah. Table 3, it's titled Pre- and Post-Analyses Comparisons with the BMPs or the, that's the stormwater facilities. For each storm event, the one-year, two-year, 10-year, 50-year, and 100-year, it lists the pre-development flow rate and CFS, which is what would occur before the site's developed.
And a CFS is a what?
I'm sorry, that's a cubic feet per second of stormwater. And so you have a pre-development column, and they're listing the pre-development flow rates ranging from 3.75 CFS for the one-year storm, all the way up to 23.73 CFS for the 100-year storm for the pre-development conditions. And then the last column is the flows from the post-development condition after the project's developed, what we would expect to see, and those have to be equal or less. And as you can see on that Table 3, they are less. You know, they range from the 2.72 CFS at the one-year storm to 23.56 CFS at the 100-year storm. So the stormwater facilities that have been designed demonstrate that post-development flows will be lesser or equal than the pre-development flows, or less, actually.
Will any chemical additives be added to any of the runoff water?
No.
With respect to ground cover and vegetation, what's the extent of the existing impervious ground cover on the site?
There, there's a total of 1.36 acres of total impervious area. You know, that includes the existing buildings. There's a little bit of existing pavement on the property. We consider like stone driveways and parking areas to be basically impervious as well. I think there's a couple of concrete pads on the site as well. Everything that's basically a hard surface.
After development, what is the extent of impervious ground cover on the site?
After the project's developed, it will go to 1.57 acres, with a .21 acre increase.
Does that calculation include all of the area around the tanker loading area, including the water storage vessels?
Yes.
Will the development of the borehole buildings have any significant impact upon the rate or volume of stormwater runoff on the site?
No.
And why is that?
The buildings are very small, and the, all that stormwater eventually make us to Buckwa, makes it to Buckwa Creek, and there's additional capacity in that system to handle that little bit of runoff that's coming off those two buildings.
In that same section, there's a discussion of the PNDI, or Pennsylvania Natural Diversity Inventory Analysis. Who is responsible for preparation of that section of the report?
Earth Res did that part of the report.
And we'll have somebody from them testify about it. And has Nestle conducted additional biological studies in, of this site?
Yes, I think Dr. Kenneth Wagner provided those studies.
And we'll have him also testify about it. Let's turn to the topographic and geologic issues. The ordinance calls for addressing the maximum existing site elevation, just for information. What is that?
The maximum elevation on the 82-acre property is eight, elevation 860.
And, and will the project have any change in the maximum elevation of the site?
No.
And what's the minimum existing site elevation of the site?
Approximately elevation 515, and that's in Buckwa Creek, near the northwest corner of the property.
And with the project development, does the lowest point of the property change? Can you briefly describe the important topographic features of the site?
The, well, the important items, of course, are the, the relief or the slope of the property, you know, coming, sloping downwards to the north and northwest. You have features such as Buckwa Creek and Watlins, you know, impervious areas, existing buildings, gravel areas. You know, those are all topographic features. Woodlands are on the property as well.
And will the project cause any notable changes in the site's topography?
No, the only fairly significant change is along the southern side of the driveway where we're proposing a retaining wall to properly construct that entrance driveway, or the loop driveway.
I believe it's clear from the application, groundwater section was prepared by Earth Res, so we'll let them testify in that section. Let's turn to the water supply for uses on the site. What onsite uses require water supply at this site?
The existing facility, the trucking garage, uses water. The proposed tanker loading building will have a bathroom, which will require water.
And what's the expected water requirement in gallons per day?
Between the two uses, it would be 200 gallons per day or less.
And what's the proposed source of water for that use?
There's an existing well that's located near the, I guess, the southeasterly portion of the loop driveway, right near the end of the proposed retaining wall.
Has testing been conducted to ensure an adequate supply of water of adequate quality for those uses you just described?
Yes.
Regarding sewage disposal, can you briefly describe the on-site sewage disposal system to be used at the site?
Sure. We've conducted testing with the township sewer enforcement officer to install a new subsurface sewage disposal system. It's located to the southern side of the project, so we will put in a new absorption bed up there, and of course, there's a septic tank and dosing tank that goes along with that system. That will handle the sewage from both. That will handle the sewage from both tanker loading building and the, any kind of sewage that would be generated from, or the bathroom from the new garage, or from the existing garage, rather.
And what types of wastewater would be generated at the site?
Standard bathroom waste sewage.
Is there any industrial wastewater being produced?
No.
What's the expected daily volume of sewage generated?
Again, less than 200 gallons a day from the combination of the two uses.
In sewage regulations, they frequently refer to equivalent dwelling units, or EDUs. The amount of volume of sewage generated between the trucking operation and the Nestle tanker loading operation, is that, how many EDUs is that?
It's less than one equivalent dwelling unit. An equivalent dwelling unit is typically 400 gallons a day for a house dwelling unit. So this will be about half of a, one EDU.
You said you were out at the site with the township sewage enforcement officer. Did you identify the absorption area for the proposed sewage system?
We did. We did the sewage probes necessary for the system, determined if the soil's adequate.
And who is the sewage enforcement officer for the township?
At the time we did it, it was Jacob Schray with Hanover Engineering, I believe.
And at the time of your examination, did the sewage enforcement officer indicate any need for a secondary absorption area?
Not at the time, no.
Did you have a discussion with him at that point? With respect to waste generated at the site, what types of solid or liquid waste are generated at the site?
Any waste generated in the bathroom, mostly items that would go into the toilet. I mean, Nestle's bathrooms have hand dryers, so there's no paper towels on them. So the solid waste is very minimal from these facilities.
And how much solid waste would be generated during construction?
You know, you would have some generated during construction, obviously, when materials come in, you know, they'll be put into a dumpster and taken away to a landfill, kind of cardboard and block from some demolition. It's just some standard construction waste.
The application refers to the water vessels being sanitized from time to time. Can you explain that process?
Sure. They, of course, with any food industry, you know, you want to keep your piping and vessels clean and sanitary. So periodically, they will come in, they will sanitize the piping and the silos that are on the site. You know, they'll put in some type of, I don't know the chemicals, but I know it would be chlorine-based, like any municipality would do. They'll wash the silos and the piping, and all that material gets quickly put into a tanker and then taken to the Branningsville bottling plant where it's disposed of.
And is, are those chemicals at any point stored in the vessels?
No, absolutely not.
In terms of the air emissions, what are the sources of air emissions associated with the proposed project?
I think the only air emission with the proposed project would be maybe some fugitive dust. Of course, you have, you know, trucks coming in and out, just like there is now.
And what stuff did control fugitive dust emissions?
There'll be dust control additives put on, on the site. That'd be primarily during construction where you would see that occur.
And then once it's paved, do you expect fugitive dust emissions?
No, no.
And I believe you previously testified that there is a requirement to turn off trucks and idle them, and not to allow them to idle. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Nestle trucks, when they pull up to the site, they turn their trucks off until the water's in the tanker and they can drive off.
Hanover Engineering's comments asked that the locations of signage be placed on the maps to show where the reminders to the truckers would be located. Are you prepared to do that and place it on the map?
Sure, we can do that.
The noise control report in the environmental impact statement is, was prepared by Rob O'Neil of Epsilon, is that correct?
Yeah, he's an expert in that. He'll testify later.
Okay, and we'll have him testify at one point. Most of the other areas of the report were prepared by other consultants as well, including the surface water and community character provisions, the historic resources and transportation. So let me take you to community facilities and services associated with the project. First of all, what kind of security measures are taken at this site to assure the protection of the facilities?
At all the Nestle sites, you will have cameras on site. You know, each of the drivers will have their own card swipe, so they'll, they can get into the building, but nobody else can. You know, they have fencing around the silos to ensure that nobody can get near the spring water that's there as well. So they do have security measures in place. They will at this site, and they have them at all the other sites.
At any of the sites you've worked at, has the facility been a substantial user of law enforcement services?
No, absolutely not.
Does the proposed project require any services from the school district?
No.
Does it require any water or wastewater utilities from the community?
No.
With respect to its design, does the facility pose any unusual characteristics with respect to potential fire hazards or fire service requirements?
No, not in my opinion.
What's the building structure composed of?
They're typically constructed of masonry, block buildings. Sometimes they have like metal panels, ceilings inside, and you know, the roof structures are, many of the sites are slate. This particular, there'd be like a slate-style shingle on this one, but mostly non-compustible materials.
Are there any hazardous materials that would be stored on site?
No.
You mentioned there was a 200-gallon propane tank being proposed. How does that compare to the size of propane tanks that might appear at a residential site?
It would be, could be similar in size, depending on what the residents were using it for. But 200 gallons, 200 gallons is not a real large propane tank.
In, on page 18 of the document, NWN A 5.5, can you describe the impact avoidance measures that have been included as part of the project, a summary of this?
Sure. I mean, during construction, there'll be erosion and sediment control measures to prevent pollution-laden runoff from leaving the site. You know, that, of course, will be approved by the conservation district. You know, after construction, you have post-construction stormwater devices, you know, and best management practices to help with water quality and rate control. During construction, you'll, you know, control dust leaving the site with additives, if necessary, or watering the soils during construction. You know, we made efforts to, you know, avoid all wetlands and waterways, complying with all the buffer requirements. There are buffers that are being maintained for the project as well. We've added some buffer, buffers to the site to further enhance those buffers.
At the bottom of page 18 of the document, there's a list of other licenses and permits and approvals. When would those approvals be obtained?
After we're through the zoning process for this project.
And just to briefly, if you just briefly summarize, what is the range of permit obligations that will have to be obtained?
It's extensive. I can go through a quick summary if you, if you'd like.
Is this an accurate and complete list of the permit requirements to your knowledge?
This is an accurate list of the permit requirements for the project. There's 13 total, including the zoning approval.
And are these similar to the requirements that you've gone through on other projects? With respect to the conclusions that are stated at the end of the environmental impact statement, from just your perspective in the subject matter that you were responsible for, do they accurately reflect your position with respect to those issues? I was referring to the conclusion of the environmental impact statement and asking whether it expressed his opinion as to simply his field. There's, I don't see where there's a legal conclusion at the end of the environmental impact statement, it's trying to summarize what the entire statement says. As I understand it, you're asking for his conclusion regarding, with regard to the items he looked at, the compliance of the environmental impact statement with the township requirements, correct?
No. I was asking him.
Reiterate your statement.
Yeah, I was, I'll, I will, Mr. Freed. The conclusion on page 19, if you see the paragraph under conclusion, does that conclusion accurately reflect your opinion with respect to the subject matter within this environmental impact statement that you were responsible for? Yes, I was part of preparing this collusion, conclusion.
Want to repeat your answer, Mr. Freed?
Yes, because I was part of preparing this conclusion.
At this point, that concludes the direct testimony for this witness.
This one will take a 10-minute break.
Not for the validity of those comments, but for the fact that they were the comments that were reviewed by Mr. Davis and responded to.
Any objection?
No objections, nor any objection as to the validity. No objection.
Those 33.1, 33.2 are admitted. And the applicant rests with respect to.
Mr. Martinez, rather than proceeding right now with cross-examination, I do want to make a motion to strike. There were certain points in the testimony tonight where the witness was opining on the, whether or not certain aspects of the project are in compliance with the ordinance. Specifically, one example is with regard to site layout and use and use overlap. That's a legal conclusion. That's ultimately for this board and, if necessary, a court to decide. It's not expert opinion, I ask that it be strictly.
I think the objection at this point is a bit untimely. Had it been made on the question, I would turn around and ask the witness to explain how it complied. And I think he, I think it's pretty clear that he's reviewed the ordinance and is trying to explain how the application meets the requirements.
To the extent that your engineer is making legal conclusions, that objection will be sustained. Obviously, the township and other objectors will have an opportunity to cross-examine your expert, and you will have an opportunity to redirect them based on the cross-examination. But obviously, the board and their solicitor will make the determination as to whether there's compliance or not when it comes to legal aspects of it. With respect to cross-examination, Mr. Freed and Mr. Preston, I assume, are you asking for an opportunity to, as opposed to commence a cross-examination now? Would you like an opportunity to prepare further for the next meeting?
Mr. Martinez, the township would request, given the time, and rather than getting started, I have an expectation that it's going to be a relatively long cross-examination, that we regroup and begin at the next, at the next meeting with our cross-examination.
Thank you, Kirk.
At this point, and as I discussed further, the objection with respect to the revisions to the application, those objections were denied. But certainly, I want to give the township and the objectors a full opportunity to cross-examine, including the revisions that were provided. And over the last three hearings, we've received a rather voluminous amount of materials that need to be reviewed, including the revisions. So certainly, I'll give an opportunity for the township and Mr. Preston and the other objectors to commence cross-examination in the next hearing date. Is there anybody here who would like to conduct any cross-examination this evening? Or, because procedurally, generally, however, we were going to do things, as I explained before, I would have the township ask cross-examination questions first, followed by Mr. Preston, then followed by the objectors. The basis for doing that is because, I think, experience-wise, no offense to anybody who may have expertise in certain areas of sedimentation control or other issues of engineering, but clearly, these gentlemen have been doing this for a while. They're going to have rather extensive cross-examination, and their questions very well may cover what questions you had. And so that we don't have duplicate cross-examination, I would prefer to start with the township, Mr. Preston, and then others who have questions of their first witness. And so we will commence that cross-examination at the next meeting. I do want to give everybody here notice of the upcoming meeting dates. Wednesday, May 18th, 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, June 25th, I mean, sorry, Wednesday, June 15th, and then Wednesday, July 20th. So the next three hearing days are May 18th, June 15th, July 20th, 2016, 7:00 p.m., here at the fire company. It will be posted at the municipal building, the next dates. We'll try to get a legal advertisement as well to those dates. If you have any questions, please call the township building. And then the final issue at this point is Mr. Vogt had, Mr. Jim Vogt had put in a request for entry of appearance. That request for entry of appearance was signed and dated on March 23rd, 2016. Mr. Vogt, he was not present last time that, I think we tried to address this at the end of the hearing. Due to time constraints, he may not have been available. Due to time constraints, he may not have been available. If he is present today, I would ask that he please step forward. Mr. Vote, I'm going to show you a document that's essentially been marked for identification as vote exhibit number one. And could you confirm that that's your application to enter an appearance and your signature?
Yes, it is.
All right. And you could please state your name, your address, and the basis for your request to enter an appearance into this proceeding.
Okay, my name is Jim Vote, I live in Ross Township, Upper Smith Gap Road, and I'm with the Aquashackle of Po 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 Watershed Concerning, and our concern is Buckwaw Creek being attributable to the Aquashackle as far as water quality and water standards. So we have an interest in this issue.
All right, Mr. Weston?
Just so that we get it on the record, do you have any members in the township?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and are you representing those members?
I'm representing our organization as a whole.
Okay, but are you relying on your membership, your members in this township's interest in?
No, I'm representing our whole watershed's interest.
Generally, with respect to an organization, if you have individuals who have standing and were to come forth with individual standing, I wouldn't understand organizational standing, but I believe as an organization to have standing, you have to have individuals who have standing. And I'm trying to find out what individuals in your organization have standing. Okay? For the record, could we, could we have that person identify themselves?
Ma'am, if you could please come forward.
Actually, we have several.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about it.
Well, ma'am, if you could please state your name and then where you live, and where you live in proximity to the proposed extraction site?
My name is Tony Sweeney, and I live at 108 Russell Lane in Eldred Township.
And how far is that in proximity to the proposed site?
I would say probably within four miles or less.
Okay. Yes, sir.
EJ Kleinopf, I'm a property owner within a mile of the site, and I own a section of Buckwaw Creek, which would be just slightly out of W P Z 2, and previously, I had given permission to this organization to do water sampling along my stream banks, and I have standing.
Are you a member of the organization?
I am not, however, they are allowed to monitor on my property. Therefore, I say they have standing through their ability to monitor on my property.
We have Kurt. Kurt, you remember? But you're a member. Of A P W C?
Yes.
And sir, if you could please state your name, your address, and where your residence is in relation to the proposed site?
Okay, yes, I have a personal residence five miles from the site in Cresquille, Pennsylvania, with a Kunkel Town address, and I also have a business less than a mile from the site, or maybe a mile and a half from the site, in Kunkel Town, with also property ownership of the Buckwaw Creek. And I am a member of the A P W C.
Anybody else present? Again, if each of you could just state your name, your address, and then your proximity to the proposed site?
My name is Jacqueline Ma, I'm in Zone 2, you define as in Kunkel Town, I'm a member.
Okay, and how far is your residence from the proposed site?
Zone 2, is that within a thousand feet or two feet, or a mile?
Half a mile.
Half a mile.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Lang, I live on Upper Smith Gap Road in Ross Township. I don't know the exact mileage, but I am right along the Aquashackle Creek.
Okay, and you're also a member of the organization?
I'm a member of the A P W C, yes.
Okay, great. Mr. Weston, do you have any objection?
Well, given the number of people who've already joined as with standing and the nature of this organization, I can understand their interest in it. I'm not sure if they meet all of the standing requirements under, under traditional standing for an organization with what they've now put in, but at this point, I'm not going to object.
Townshiper, Mr. Preston, have anything to add?
No objections.
All right, so we'll accept your application.
Thank you.
And again, since you are granted standing, you'll have the right to cross-examine witnesses, introduce evidence, but obviously, as with every objector who has been granted standing, I would ask that as we go through the cross-examination process, please listen closely so that we're not duplicating, because obviously, everybody needs to be heard. We need as much information as possible with respect to this project, and your concerns and cross-examination questions are important, but we don't want to duplicate that, and we don't want this going on for five years. So we have to kind of streamline the process somewhat. All right, do you have any more? All right, does anybody have any questions with respect to the next hearing dates of May 18th, June 15th, and July 20th? Does anybody have any questions with respect to the procedure or how we're going to move forward on May 18th, 2016, 7:00 p.m.? Great, that concludes the hearing for this evening, thank you.